Good evening, everyone. City Clerk and City Manager, are you okay? Are we ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Ready here in City Hall.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. We call the meeting of October the 26th, 2021 at 5:00. And we're going to call this special City Council meeting to order. May I please have Roll City Clerk?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina is not present. Mayor Medina?
Here. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number three, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. This is for items that are not on the agenda at this time. If there's anybody from the public, if you can raise your hand, and then we will go ahead. Our clerk will bring you in the room. Seeing no hands at this time, we will go ahead and bring it back and have it open up to why we're here this evening, which is the special meeting. And this is to receive a first quarterly update for the year 2021, 2022, for the City Council's strategic initiatives with a focus on strategic initiatives related to the city ballot measures for the November 2022 general election. And our City Manager is going to be taking lead, and he has a lot of the senior leadership team here to support. This is going to be a longer presentation, colleagues. So if there are questions amongst it, the City Manager was asking at certain points, maybe he'll pause or accept those, and then we won't wait till the end. But with that said, going to turn that over to our City Manager.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Grogan, City Manager. Mayor Medina, you were absolutely right. I will be backstopped and supported by your entire senior leadership team that are here and ready to support conversations during this study session. We did plan this study session for the two-hour period, 5 to 7. I think the core of our presentation and discussion from staff may take 45 minutes. However, we do invite, as the mayor said, questions during that process. And so, why don't we, why don't we begin? And so, this is the first quarter update, really covering the period of July through September and the progress that we've made on the City Council's initiatives. So the objective is really twofold. The first one is to provide you with an update for Q1 on the initiatives, and then discuss and receive direction on all potential City Council ballot measures for the upcoming November 2022 election. And what we mean by that, and we'll talk about that a lot today, we are not deciding what to place on the ballot in by Council's direction today. You're not even confirming that you will put it on the ballot. What you're directing is for staff to undertake the necessary work and engage the City Council in further discussions and have that policy-setting conversation on should this item, should the City Council put the item on the ballot. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. But I just wanted to make that very much clear. So our back, we'll give a, our agenda today is we'll give a quick background. We'll give a status summary of the initiatives. There are many, many more initiatives than we'll go into detail, but we are ready to answer questions on all of them. But this PowerPoint slide will provide a summary and then highlight in some level of detail, eight additional, eight additional initiatives. They're listed here. We'll talk about parking meters. That'll be done by our Police Chief Ryan Johansson. We'll talk about trash receptacles and where we are with that. That will be mainly presented by our interim Public Works Director, Awan Renji. The next three, the downtown greening and landscape plan, as well as Tulsi Park and Centennial Park improvements, will be provided in part by myself, but also by Ann Matola, your Community Services Director. Shared City Services and Grant Writing will be provided by Jennifer Brazil, the Assistant to the City Manager. Short-term rentals and cannabis will both be provided by the City Attorney. Short-term rentals will be supplemented by the Finance Director, Shin Yusun. And cannabis will be supplemented by our Community and Economic Development Director, Kamala Wu. We'll then discuss the potential items that Council would like staff to look into on the November 22 ballot. There are two items, or actually three items, that are currently on your strategic initiative. I say two because they are, there are two initiatives, but the first initiative actually has two items that may be a integrated measure, or they may be separate measure. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So a little bit of background. Council knows this, so I won't go into detail at all. I'll just say that our strategic initiative process is evolving. It is a living, breathing organism, and we are constantly evaluating and changing it to make sure that it fits your needs. Most recently, in 2021, the City Council further streamlined initiatives. You modified, you added some, you deleted some. You really wanted them to be high-level initiatives directed by the City Council. And of the utmost importance, you added a priority, priority categories. And we also added a quarterly update process. This is background, so I'll go really quick on this. What is a priority focus area for anyone watching this? A priority focus area is a particular area of organizational focus for this, your government, the City of San Bruno's government, identified by the City Council annually. They can and do change over time based on a number of factors, but interest, need, and resources. And they are not listed in any preference or priority order. We'll talk a lot about the term strategic initiative. What is that? It is a specific effort that must align to one or more of the City Council's priority focus areas. It requires a work effort that is really above normal operations and capital maintenance. And that really aligns to a number of the edits that the City Council made to the strategic initiatives. You want, you really want it to eliminate those, albeit highly important, capital maintenance projects and operational things, but really elevate it and center on higher-level initiatives. It requires direct involvement with the leadership team, the City Manager or Department Directors. And it's very important. Some initiatives can be accomplished in one fiscal year, while others are multi-year efforts. And so, we've seen that over the years with strategic initiatives. But we always make great progress. Some things are completed, things are added, and some things stay. But really quick, just to review the City Council's priority focus areas, those seven areas that you have said should be a high priority for this organization for the coming year. Implement transit quarter vision to revitalize downtown in our commercial quarter. Assure rehabilitation and replacement of critical community facilities and infrastructure. Grow city revenues and assure ongoing fiscal stability and economic vitality. Continue to strengthen community connections, engagement, and communication. Protect and improve community aesthetics and safety. Continue to proactively plan for the future of San Bruno. Strong governance and or, strong governance, organizational health, and employee success. At a high level, there are 43 initiatives. At this point, four have been completed. 19 are active projects that we are actively working on, that you, many of which we'll talk about. 15 are anticipated to start later this fiscal year. Five are unlikely to start this fiscal year due to various reasons. The main one being capacity bandwidth, both staff and financial capacity for those five initiatives that are not likely to start. There is a detailed matrix that we provided and that is available that gives a status on all 43 of these initiatives. The ones that we picked to highlight are those that we think are sort of the utmost importance to the City Council at this juncture and items where we have a significant update to share with the City Council. But that doesn't mean that at the conclusion of this presentation that you shouldn't ask questions on any of the 43 initiatives. So please do. And again, your entire senior leadership team is here to support you. So now, we will start going through a few specific initiatives. The first one is your initiative 1.1, installation of parking meters in downtown. Very important project. And for that, I will turn it over to Police Chief Ryan Johansson, who was having connection issues at the beginning of my presentation. Let's see if he's on. Looks like he's on.
I see him there.
Okay, Ryan, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. As mentioned, I am Ryan Johansson, your Chief of Police. Happy to report to you tonight briefly on the specific initiative that is installation of parking meters downtown. This is a project that was moved over to the control of the Police Department in the past year. And so, we've been actively engaged in implementing a solution here for you. Coming up with some potential solutions here for you. I'll provide an update on those here now. So this is, we are the lead department on this. It says on the slide, it is an active project. We have current budget of $225,000 to implement installation of parking meters downtown. Since the Police Department took this project under our wing, it has been expanded significantly, largely due to the overlap between parking meters downtown and parking enforcement. Obviously, any meter solution would need to be enforced by the Police Department or some entity. And so, there's some natural overlap that has sort of expanded the scope of this project, specifically looking at not only metering, but ALPR, or Automated License Plate Reader-based Enforcement, permit parking facilitation capabilities, expanded enforcement. An example of that has been conversations that this Council has had regarding the expansion of street sweeping enforcement throughout the city. These are all things that have overlap or potential overlap with this project. And I think that recognizing that has led us in a direction to solve many problems with one potential solution here. We are currently working with multiple potential vendors, but we do believe we may have identified a sole source to bring before Council in the relatively near future. Staff is likely to end up recommending a complete outsourced solution that will include most services and enforcement needs, as well as the parking meter installation and maintenance itself. We are seeking vendor assistance with everything here, including determining the appropriate parking zones, pricing recommendations, the placement of the different meters and kiosks. And there's kind of a lot of moving parts there as well. Some of the key components and decisions to be made here are the difference between short- and long-term metering solutions, what we'll do about downtown business owners and employees as far as accommodating potential variations in the metering and the costs for them, how we can, again, implement solutions that will accommodate permits if desired by the Council in terms of permitting both in the metered zones as well as the residential permit parking program, and how that can sort of be dovetailed in with enforcement of this program. The decision over making sure we can provide both mobile and kiosk payment methods for users, and then the contemplation of whether this should be plate-based permit parking versus space-based permit parking. And the report that we will provide Council with in short order will certainly provide some different alternatives in those regards and some recommendations from staff and the reasoning behind those recommendations. Can we move to the next slide, please? So continuing on, this has also exposed the potential need to evaluate code, policy, and procedural changes. Obviously, as you implement a new solution like this, especially if it includes a changing of our enforcement posture and even potentially enforcing through an outsource, it could require not only some changes to our procedures here at the Police Department, but to our policies and potentially even to municipal code. And so, those are some additional undertakings that have come with this. An important next step for us is to assess the payment kiosk locations as well as the power and communication needs of the kiosks and the permitting systems. And so, this includes not only collaboration with the potential vendors, but collaboration with other city entities like Public Works and City Net Services for connectivity. Additionally, the Police Department is in the early stages of structuring a public outreach campaign. Obviously, as we get closer to making some recommendations to Council, it will be important for us to be able to report back on the sentiments of the businesses that will be affected, as well as the residents that are likely to be affected by the decisions and the policies that you make. In terms of a schedule for next milestones, we believe that by December of this year, we should have an updated proposal from the vendor, which will include all of the components that we have discussed here briefly today. By January or February, we should begin our public outreach. By April of 2022, we believe we should have a first draft of parking zone maps and fee recommendations. And if we can stay on course with those scheduled dates, we believe that by June, July of 2022, we should be ready to begin actual implementation, which would mean actual construction and installation of our meters, as well as transitioning over to the potential outsource for enforcement and other related services. So that concludes my presentation, updating you on this specific initiative. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if the intention is to accept questions, initiative by initiative, or to wait till the end, but I am certainly available for questions at your disposal.
Yeah, I want to take a pause now and ask Council if they have any questions on this before you conclude. Also important to the City Council, just want to go back and highlight the issue with regard to short-term and long-term and permit parking. That's something that will be featured heavily in our outreach to the business community there. As you know, our off-street parking lots, there are some that are longer-term, parking lots, five-hour lots. What a more electronic system would allow us to do is not have certain lots designated as long-term or short-term, but actually be able to issue individual permits where they can park in, at the lot closest to their place of employment or their, or their business. And they, by typing in their permit number, be allowed to park maybe five or a full workday, eight hours in that, in a lot where they don't have to sort of park further away. But a lot of decisions and conversations have to be had. Through the mayor, would you like me to facilitate Council questions, or?
I'm fine either way. What would, what do you think would be best for you?
Sure. Why don't I just call on Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you. So you actually answered the second question already regarding the, how to potentially do the lots. My question has to do with the residential parking permit program. Would, would you anticipate that the vendor would potentially make recommendations for changing the current program that we have in place? Because I'm concerned that our existing plan isn't working because we've had no, you know, no neighborhoods have come forward anywhere to implement the plan as it, as it stands. And therefore, I'm concerned with implementing meters if we don't have a permit plan for the surrounding neighborhoods.
Sure. Chief, do you want to take that, and then I'll follow up?
Sure. I think that the short answer would be that we have not to date looked to the potential vendor as a source of recommendations for changes in policy. We have looked to them in terms of scoping out the impacts that the installation of meters will have on specific neighborhoods, specific residents, specific businesses, so that we can better determine what the needs might be there as far as accommodating permits that are directly related to the metered zones. We were also speaking here, however, about the possibility that, you know, we've talked a number of times about how the residential permit parking program, if implemented, would be enforced, how it would facilitate the issuance of permits. These have always been big questions that come with costs that we had to address. And it's looking quite encouraging that this entity could provide those services all in one place so that if neighborhoods are implementing or requesting the RPPP's, that we're able to accommodate the backend side of it with software and enforcement.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And just to piggyback on that, one of the reasons why we expanded the scope of it is because, just thinking about downtown in particular, we didn't want to set up a parking meter enforcement program and that maybe by space and then have a, a permit parking program two blocks away that's by license plate, right? And so, we can have our, we can have one enforcement mechanism for the entire area and have it be single. And I think I saw a hand by Vice Mayor Medina earlier. Yes, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Chief Johansson. This, this is a long time coming. The parking situation downtown is, is very difficult. And there is no way we can have a downtown parking program without accounting for the need of our residents that are adjacent to our downtown. And then that just dominoes out across the extended neighborhood. So I believe I heard enough of how we'll move forward and, and make sure that we're, we're going to be having outreach and input from, from the affected neighborhoods. Other cities do the same. It's not just the downtown. It extends out into the neighborhood. And from memory, I believe we did have that in our downtown parking study. So I think I'm okay with where we're at. And thank you for the presentation.
Councilwoman Mason?
Report, and I'm glad to see if this is progressing. I just had a couple of questions. Use the word contracting out. And is that, I'm just curious, is that because it's something that cannot be done in-house? So I would imagine the City of San Bruno doesn't create parking meters. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. Why don't I take the first part about that? Yes, so absolutely. Any final decision to contract out will have to go through the meeting conferred process and be a decision of the City Council. In contracting out, certainly there will be a vendor that will provide the parking meters and the, and the software and technology for that. What we're referring to is the actual personnel that issued the tickets. And so, some cities use city staff, other cities use contract staff. There are pros and cons to each model. Certainly, cost implications and long-term personnel liabilities connected to both. And so, we want to, we're taking a step back and looking holistically at parking enforcement, knowing that we have candidly challenges to date with staff resources to effectively do parking enforcement, not just in the downtown, but also in the neighborhoods, as well as enforcement for street sweeping. And we know that there's another initiative that we will be beginning later this fiscal year, looking at expanding how we do street sweeping and requiring, potentially requiring cars to move. That will absolutely, we know, come with an additional cost for enforcement. And so, we wanted to look holistically at enforcement. And in doing so, it really led us down the path of looking at alternative service delivery models and potentially not having city staff be the individuals that are actually writing the tickets. And so, we're looking into that, but very, a lot of conversations to come before any decisions are made.
I didn't know if Chief Johansson's going to follow up on the parking meter part, or?
Sure. Parking meter, Chief Johansson, will you take it? I know that there's a vendor, or several vendors that we're looking at. Any additional?
Yeah, I actually, I think that I'm happy to provide any further clarification that is specifically desired. I think that you, you covered everything I would have covered. The question about the meters is that we're looking towards a, right now, what we're most likely to recommend if nothing changes, and we're still very much in the process here for you all to consider, is an outsourcing recommendation for enforcement that is capable and has a demonstrated track record of bringing in the other vendors necessary for the construction of the parking meters, the maintenance of the processing of the fees that can integrate with our existing data collector and turbo data that processes all of our citations and our citation reviews and our collections and that side of things. So they're, they're kind of operating like a general contractor, for lack of maybe a better illustration. This really is a project that's used best-in-class services. I think we're going to need someone that kind of is able to bring all those best-in-class services together to bring a solution that makes for the one for San Bruno. Again, there's, as the City Manager said, much, much contemplation, decision-making. I'm sure a lot of questions still on behalf of Council. Just trying to provide an update of where we're at now. Ultimately, we'll be making a handful of recommendations and will remain available to answer all the questions that kind of amount from those. I'm saying that because currently, we're sitting on a hopeful date. We're looking at receiving our updated proposal, actually well ahead of the December 21 schedule. We're being told in the next two weeks. And that's going to give us a lot of fodder for more questions and an opportunity to provide more information to you all.
Just another note about interplay. When we look at the kiosks, certainly you have to power them. That's oftentimes done by solar now. And then they need communication needs. And so, that's one of the reasons why we're working with CityNet, because some cities actually have to pay for a cellular card in each of the meters. We may have the possibility with CityNet to actually provide the kiosk with, with internet. And so, we may be able to run a loop and utilize some, some resources that we have in-house for that. And so, we're having those conversations. And not seeing any other hands of, oh, Councilmember, Councilwoman Mason? I think we have another. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I have just a couple more follow-up questions. So that's, I'm glad to hear that we're, again, utilizing our wonderful San Bruno CityNet. And, you know, hopefully, we can continue looking at ways to use it as a resource. I just wanted to go back to the contracting out. I just want to say, I know that we don't, we no longer have the Personnel Committee. And it is important that, that we find something that works for the city, for sure. But I do want to make sure that our union partners are aware and that we're working in good faith with them. I did want to just make a comment about the permits. Maybe as one suggestion that I have seen is an annual fee. So individuals who might be working downtown every day might want a permit, a permit, but it's instead of giving an allotment of hours, it's just a fee that would be paid annually for a particular permit that is placed on the windshield that's a certain color. And maybe, maybe by this point, you can type in a number. But I know that where I've seen it and where I've had it is an actual parking permit, and it, and it changes color and number every year. I did want to ask about comparables. I know that our, our ex-chief had gone to San Mateo, and San Mateo had adopted a similar program. And I'm wondering if we would be able to follow up with San Mateo just to see the, you know, the benefits and any negatives that might be associated with the program that was implemented? Just to see, you know, the, the level of success that it's had. I remember seeing it on the front page of the paper when it first was introduced. And so, I'd just be curious if we would be able to get any comparables that other cities have had that might help us inform our decisions.
Yeah, just to be clear, we've been working intimately with San Mateo PD throughout this process. They've been one of our primary resources in gathering data about what's worked and what hasn't.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, do we know if in the city our size, that cost balances out? Or have we done those numbers yet?
So I don't have the numbers in front of me because we're waiting on some updated quotes. I can, I can share with you here that all indications thus far, from checking in with San Mateo, from other cities of similar size, and with the vendor and their projections, is that it would, even after all costs are factored in, continue to be a significant revenue item for the city.
Great, thank you. And then also, cost-wise comparables also. Are we looking at like-sized cities? So, you know, if you go into San Francisco, it is so expensive now to park in a meter. But you go to Burlingame, and 25 cents gets you a long time. And so, I just want to make sure that we're being comparable for, you know, the city our size and what the realities are of individuals who go downtown.
Yes, absolutely. We, we, we will look at all of those factors, as well as other factors such as demand pricing and pricing the on-street spaces potentially higher than the off-street spaces because we know what our downtown parking survey said, which is you oftentimes go downtown in every street. Every space on the street is full, but there's plenty of spaces in the parking lots. So making the on-street spaces more expensive will drive people to those parking lots as well.
Okay. And then just my last comment, aside from thanking you for the work that you've done so far to get this moving, which I do want to just thank everybody who's been working on this. I also just want to ask, if possible, similar to a development impact fee, can the city create a fee that where the, an amount for every meter is taken and contributing to a future parking structure?
Park, I might have muted, no. I'm sorry. Parking revenue will be general fund revenue, subject to the discretion of the City Council and through the annual budgeting process or other mechanisms, the City Council can decide to set aside net revenue in various fashions. And so, we, we can certainly have those conversations.
And San Mateo may be worth looking into. I was told by a merchant that the parking structure is, that there's a portion of the parking meters that go towards the funding of the parking structure that they've had for a long time. I, this is hearsay, so just a model that would be worth looking into. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Without seeing any more hands, we will go to our second.
My hand's up, city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Medina, I see it.
No, no worries. Real quick, and then I just want to have a check-in with you, city manager. Is one that the Personnel Board was, is not part of the outsourcing contracting items. But however, my history and knowledge is that the city always deals with the union and dialogues with them in regards to items such as this, just like they did for the pre-trimming crew, whether it's agreed to or not, but that those items are brought forward as past practice. But what I also want to do is a check-in is that we've, we're on the first item and we're at 30 minutes so far. I know the presentation in itself could be 45 minutes to an hour total without questions from council. So I just want to remind my colleagues of time and maybe try to streamline questions, questions, and not broaden it so that we could assist the staff and the team so that we can get through the presentation. Back to you, city manager.
Okay, without seeing hands, we will go to the next item, which is Strategic Initiative 3.2, Trash Receptacles. And I will ask our interim Public Works Director, Heyuan Rich, you to provide an update.
Interim Public Works Director. I'm here to give an update on the priority project of replacing trash receptacles throughout the city. The update that I have now is that there was a budget set for $130,000 to purchase these receptacles. There were the Dumont trash cans, which is the picture on the left. And those will be placed at locations within downtown and where the city owns trash cans, along El Camino, Cherry, and throughout the city. Those were ordered back in May due to some supply chain issues. They are arriving in October. And my understanding is that they are in California and should be delivered any day now. For the Big Valleys that are on the right, so we've ordered approximately 48 of those at a cost of approximately $90,000. The Big Valleys to the right are those that have software as well as the handles and the kick bar. They will be outfitted with the side panels that messages can be replaced as desired. And those will be located at more high trash generating locations. Those were ordered this month and will be expected to be delivered in January of 2022. Next slide, please. So preliminary locations for the trash receptacles to be provided by council's Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee for review and feedback. We believe that this could be an opportunity to engage with the business owners of where the trash cans are located currently. And if there's opportunities to relook at some of those locations, whether they be moved over slightly or replaced and cleaned or relocated entirely. Staff has taken the effort to locate the location, or determine the locations of the trash cans and has created maps that can be used for the Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee, should that be the desired path. These units will be installed by city staff through the Public Works Department. And so the milestones for the schedule are to receive the receptacles. On October, November is the first trash can that will be delivered, approximately 50 of those. The locations will be finalized sometime in November. Staff will also need to assess the staff resources required to install the units. So we'll proceed with installing a couple first and determining the staff needed to do that. The locations will be power washed and unlike the units that are there now, they will need to be able to down. And so there will be some prep work, calling in USA, making sure that they're properly bolted down. And we anticipate being able to install the trash receptacles in the timeframe of November to January. Of course, events such as this past weekend can affect the timeline just due to response and the staff having other work or work plans as well. But that is the plan to have staff be able to install them. That includes this portion of the initiative. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, not seeing any hands, we will go to the next item. Councilwoman Mason?
Sorry, just one quick question. I had asked when we first approved the trash receptacles if we had a plan in place for the maintenance of those receptacles. And I just wanted to follow up. If you don't have a plan, that's okay. But I do want to make sure we have a plan by the time we get the new trash receptacle. And what I mean by a plan is SOP standard operating procedures of how they're going to be cleaned, when they're going to be cleaned, and which department is responsible for cleaning them.
So Councilwoman Mason, you're right, we did talk about that. We do have a, the issue is not a plan to maintain it. The issue is additional resources to maintain them more frequently and power wash more frequently. And that is the problem that we have to solve. There is power washing that occurs regularly downtown. The challenge is that it is not nearly frequent enough, nor is there budget for that. And so we, we have not yet looked into expanding the cleaning of downtown, be it trash cans or otherwise. One of the resources we were looking to have to do that, because that could potentially be several hundreds of thousands of dollars to do it the way other cities have do it, where they have a regular crew that goes out that is solely focused on downtown, is to look at additional revenue that comes in from parking meters and potentially apply some of that revenue downtown. And so have we developed a enhanced program for cleaning downtown? The answer to that is no, we have not. And at this point, we have not yet identified the resources that would be needed to do that. Because they're not insubstantial at all if we are to have a regular, a more regular program where there is, whether it's the ambassador-type program where you have people there on a daily basis or you step up your cleaning to a weekly or a bi-weekly power washing.
So I might want to maybe suggest talking to Recology. My understanding is that there are agreements in other cities where they take out the bins and they clean some of them, where the city cleans the outside or the exterior and vice versa. And if we're going to be looking for a new contract procurement, then the possibility of adding that to the RFP is a possibility that we may want to consider. And my understanding is that they're about once a month. But I was downtown at 7:00 AM this morning, really happy to see the power washing. But our garbage cans look like they have not been cleaned in a really, really long time. So I just want to make sure that we're paying a lot of money. This is a huge investment for us and that they are going to be maintained. So thank you for the report and I just wanted to not forget that detail. Thank you.
Next item, downtown greening and landscaping plan. I'll turn this over to Director Matola. And as she begins, just as a reminder to the city council, that this item was initially put forward to the Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee as a part of the budget process for seeing that they concurred with the expenditure. They did not initially, council requested that the, that city staff re-approached the committee with the request, subsequent to the adoption of the budget. And we did that on September 8. And the committee did not support the request to spend the $300,000 on this effort. The committee did recognize that this is an important initiative for the city council, but they suggested using another funding source, given that significant roadway funds have not yet been spent, given that significant roadway improvements have not yet been undertaken by Measure G funding and the community's high interest in seeing that roadway maintenance and repairs occur with Measure G. They really just felt that now was not the time. That coupled with the information that in the first substantial year that the city received Measure G funding, while it was a recommendation that either the staff wanted to give, the council wanted to accept, or Measure G, or the Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee wanted to accept, all three of the bodies supported utilizing Measure G funds in the amount of $2 million to cover for any immediate revenue loss that the city undertook as a result of COVID-19. And so because those initial year, initial first-year funds of Measure G were, did not go to roadway maintenance, but significant funds have been allocated to roadway maintenance for Measure G but not yet expended, the committee felt that now wasn't the time for this $300,000 request. And they could not support it as a Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee. I'll turn it over to Director Matola to talk a little bit about the components of that $300,000 as well as our schedule and next milestones.
Thank you, Javon. So again, really what we're talking about with the downtown greening and landscaping, the real first phase of this is the feasibility and design work. And so we were asking for $300,000 for an on-call landscape architectural design services. And the breakdown of that 300, of the breakdown of that 300, $175,000 was for the actual downtown greening, exploring the ability of retraining the downtown area. It was $75,000 of the 300 we have earmarked for the Posey Park improvements. And then there was another $50,000 set aside for park improvement and rehabilitation projects. At this time, even if we received the funding, we do not have the staff resources to facilitate the work. And so what you'll see is that we'll probably be coming back in mid-year, for the mid-year budget process to try to identify 75 for Posey Park. We have an update coming on that slide, on the next slide. We do need to identify 175 and a funding source for that if we are going to kind of launch, get started with the greening and landscaping of San Mateo. And then we'll also be looking to identify $50,000 for park improvement and rehabilitation projects.
Yeah.
Which will be coming back in the mid-year.
Yeah, and it's important to note that in the next steps, the $75,000 for Posey Park is first because the update that we'll give is that it looks like that we will receive a grant in the amount of $200,000. And so that project will likely come off calls. And one of the first expenditures in that project is the on-call landscape architectural services to help with the design of Posey Park. And so as we looked at that $300,000, knowing that there's limited staff resources to begin the work, but realizing that one part of this was to cover some landscape architectural services for our Posey Park project, it's important that that be put ahead in the sequence of the other items. So with that, we'll pause and take questions from members of the city council. Vice Mayor Medina, I think you had your hand up earlier too.
Yeah, thank you. The earlier hand was for the news racks. I don't think we touched upon that, but it was in the slide, right? The news racks and the update of what's going on with that.
So sure, we can pause. So we talked about Initiative 3.1, which was trash receptacles. There's a separate initiative 3.2 for the newspaper racks that is funded at $300,000. That is anticipated to start in Q3 or Q4 this fiscal year. And it is on hold pending staff resources to work on that project. And so the staff that has been, that will work on this project has been working on the 3.1 project as well as their, their normal work duties. Toward Q3 and Q4, we anticipate them having time to address the newspaper rack project. And so that, that wasn't captured in the PowerPoint, but, but a high-level summary of that is on the matrix for item 3.2.
Great, thank you for that. My question about this overall on-call primarily is, that would be great to have it all done, you know, a great, well-thought-out plan. My interest is for the trees that are dead, that are in pots, what, what are we going to do with those for the time being? And how, how much effort and funding would be necessary for the Genevan entrance to our downtown to have those pots removed and plants put into the ground?
So I don't know that we could give you today a project estimate. But why don't I turn the core of that question to Director Matola?
Yeah, I would agree that, that's something that we could easily look into. If it's kind of demo and replacement, we would need to see if that's a scope that we could deal with in-house. Again, it's important to remind you that we have an in-house park maintenance, not a park design division. So depending on the scope, we might be able to come up with some options. But I couldn't give you a cost either at this point without really taking a look at it.
Understood. So where the pots currently are, removing those pots and putting trees into the ground at those locations?
So you're looking at Genevan and San Mateo?
Just, just Genevan. There's, there's probably six pots on that. But I understand we're, we're short on time, but if, if staff could look into that, that would be great. Because, you know, we, we do the best that we can with, with, with the, with the revenues and the funds that we have. And at least doing that part of our entrance to downtown, one of the three entrances to downtown, that, that would say, that would, that would say more than what is there currently. That's all.
So can we go to Councilwoman Mason? But before we leave this item, I just want to make sure that if we're modifying any of these strategic initiatives that we have, the concurrence of the full city council to do so. And then we'll move forward and adjust the strategic initiative as appropriate. Councilwoman Mason?
Yes, I understand that the money may not be there right away. I'm really excited to hear about the $200,000. But I just wanted to let everyone know that I have been using this background. And this background I found on a search for Posey Park. And so I just wanted everyone to know the possibilities of what we can get to little by little if we really envision something different. And it's really inviting. It has little posts, it has tables. And so while our $500,000 plan may not get here, I think we can get halfway here. And over time, add as funds become available. So this is really just an effort to encourage my fellow council members to continue on and continue seeing something greater than we see now. Because Posey Park really could be a great gathering place at our Caltrain stop. Thank you. Thanks for the work being done on this project.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Going to your specific question over around support for doing just the Genevan piece, just those six pots, putting them into the ground. Because it, I am supportive of it. And the reason that I am is that it wouldn't interfere with the potential streetscape plan, which is a reason why we couldn't move ahead with it, you know, with replacing any on San Mateo Avenue. I believe there's no underground potential conflicts with stormwater systems or other systems on Genevan. And it seems to be that it would be a quick win. And, you know, obviously, you know, and we wouldn't expect you to be able to pull, to pull the cost of that out of the air. But if it's a, if it's a reasonable, if it's at a reasonable con- but if it's a reasonable, if it's at a reasonable cost and something that are, that we will be able to fit in with staff, I would absolutely be supportive of it.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands. I see a hand up from Vice Mayor Medina and a hand up from Councilwoman Mason. Are those hands from earlier or new hands?
Mine's just a clarification request on the item, on the same item on the table.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I just was wondering what's the change? Because isn't this all part of the landscaping and greening plan eventually? Are we just saying that this will be prioritized over the others, that it's still part of the grand plan?
Right. So let me recite it, and Vice Mayor Medina, you correct it. What I'm hearing is to modify the strategic initiatives such that we will investigate how much it will cost and what the full effort undertaking, both labor, money, resources, time, to undertake a pot removal and tree planting process on Genevan from El Camino Real to San Bruno Avenue, and we think there are approximately six pots there, and look at replacing those pots with street trees. And so adding that as a, as a new work effort here to investigate the cost, timing, and resources to do that.
I would alternate that definition as it's a phased approach that waiting to get everything done typically takes a really long time. And phasing the first part of Genevan, upon hearing back from staff of what that effort would take, knowing that there are no stormwater conflicts there at those locations, and asking for my colleagues to allow staff to do that. It's not creating a new initiative. It's breaking down an initiative from a really larger phased, comprehensive approach to managing something that hopefully staff can take on. And they'll let us know if they can or they cannot, and how much that will cost. That's what I'm proposing. And if one of my colleagues could say that they agree with it, then we could go ahead and move forward with it. So I'm asking Councilman Salazar, Mayor Medina, or Councilwoman Mason for support.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, on the point of this meeting, is it to review these or is it to add or modify initiatives? City manager, could you help me with some clarification?
We are facilitating the city council through an update of the strategic initiatives. Should the city council like to give direction on modification of initiatives? We are happy to take that direction. We have not planned for to go through each of these initiatives and go through a confirmation or modification process. Staff is solely responding to a request by Vice Mayor Medina that this initiative be amended, and Vice Mayor Medina clarified, be phased such that there be an effort to look at removal of existing pots and planting of street trees along Genevan between El Camino Real and San Bruno Avenue. Reacting to that, what I wanted to clarify is that that request is supported by the full city council. Obviously, tonight, we can't give a cost nor the time that it would take staff to do that investigation, but we could certainly take that direction should it come from the city council.
Thank you for the clarification.
So in the interest of time, is that request supported by council, or should we move on, or Mr. Mayor, how would you like to handle that?
Vice Mayor asked a question of his colleagues, and I think you've got a majority that would like at least it looked into. And please, colleagues, correct me.
So far, we have two.
Also, I support it as a phased approach and just essentially moving this as a priority within the phases. That's, I am fine with that. Thank you.
Okay. Without seeing any additional questions, staff would like to move on to Initiative 4.2, which is an update on Posey Park. And again, I'll turn that over to Community Services Director Matola.
Super. Great. Okay, so we do have a little progress moving forward with Posey Park. We've been actively working with Supervisor Pine's office on a Measure G grant. And we're working on a staff report forward to the Board of Supervisors. So the $200,000, of course, isn't the cost of the whole project. The build amount that we, that council decided on in our April retreat that we had was $500,000. There's also a need for $75,000 to cover the landscape architect. So we still have $375,000 that's as of yet unidentified. And again, so at this point, we need the resources and staffing and consultants to lead this project. But we're moving forward with the Measure G grant. So the next milestones are to move this funding approval through with the County Board of Supervisors. And we are working with the timing on when to take it to the Board of Supervisors because in the report, they want to know that we have the match, the remainder of the project funding identified. So we will be bringing back to council the kind of the gap that we have of $375,000 that we're looking for at the mid-year budget process. We hope to hire a landscape architect February or March of 2022. And then we'll be going through, we'll create a schedule at that time with design development with the young construction. Are there any questions on this initiative?
Councilwoman Mason?
No questions. Thank you for the work. And I guess I said earlier, I apologize about the Posey Park project. So I just want to apply my earlier comments to the Posey Park. Thank you so much.
Okay. In the interest of time, not seeing any hands, stop me if I'm wrong. We're going to go to the next one. Centennial Park, again, Director Matola.
Right. So we can work with a landscape architect, probably to evaluate the site and to begin some design concepts. We also have to work a little bit on the uniform cost accounting process and implement that. With this setup, it's going to facilitate our bid process when, once we get to that, once we actually get a design that we can put out to bid. What also happened is we were working with the architect who were looking at the site. We just wanted to evaluate the inclusion of the alley that connects from San Mateo Avenue into the back parking lot. And the reason for that is there was a thought that we would go through all of this effort to remedy and to rehab Centennial Plaza, and then you have kind of this incongruous alleyway adjacent to it. So we are taking a look at that to see what type of surface treatments perhaps that we can do in that area to make it more of a cohesive part of this plaza. We anticipate proposals will be ready to renew in November. So we can bid the project starting in December and start construction at the top of next year. We believe that once we start construction, it should be about a 90-day project, so hopefully will be completed in May. I do want to give you a little footnote. All this being told, right? We are planning on having our holiday tree lighting at that site, and we're working on getting a really grand tree. So it'll be a beautiful focal point for the downtown for this holiday season. So for the next milestones with the project, again, we're finalizing the scope, and that should be finalized by November. So we can take a look at the designs, send this out to bid in December, start construction in early spring of 2022, and have this completed by May or June of next year. Are there any questions on this project, on this initiative?
Councilmember Hamilton?
No questions. Quick, just a very quick comment. Very glad to hear that we'll be able to do the tree lighting there this year. I would recommend if, assuming that with the design review being ready or completed by November, you know, maybe having a display for folks who come to that about what this park's going to look like next year. That would be an exciting thing to do for our residents. This is a suggestion. Thank you.
In the interest of time, without seeing any hands, okay, Vice Mayor Medina?
Really, really quick. Thank you. Tree lighting would be fantastic. And is Santa Claus going to be coming?
I believe we have him in. I believe we can make that happen.
That would be great. What that Santa tracker was really super cool, too. So excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item 8.0, Shared City Services. This update is primarily on grant writing, so I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Brazil.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of the council. Jennifer Brazil, Assistant City Manager. Here to share with you the status update on our RFP for grant writing. We issued an RFP a few weeks ago, October 15th, and our submittals are due November 12th. We are searching for individuals or consultant firms to help us with researching and identifying potential grants and providing general grant writing services associated with the completion and submission of grant application, program and administration, and delivery. We are looking for grants for our program delivery areas, economic development, energy efficiency, sustainability, law enforcement, technology, fire prevention, housing program, infrastructure development, maintenance, information technology, cybersecurity, and a variety of other programs that the city serves. And next slide, please. So the RFP is seeking services for a variety of things. So we're looking for basically funding needs analysis. So the consultant would facilitate meetings with city departments to assess the validity of current funding priority areas, identifying changes in funding priority areas, and then helping staff to identify new priority areas for possible funding. Also, grant funding research, conducting research to identify grant resources such as like federal, state agencies or organizations that support the city's funding needs and priorities. Additionally, this initiative focuses on general grant proposing, proposal writing services such as proposal development and then the actual submission of the grant applications on behalf of the city. This, the individual or firm would support the city in providing timely reports for grants as well as presenting updates to staff, boards, commissions, committees, or to council. And we'll ensure that we're on track with our goals. We ask the selected vendor to provide monthly reports to the city to summarize their time and activities for grant services. What questions can I answer for you? We're looking to award the contract hopefully at the end of December, early January.
Not seeing any questions, or we will go to item 9.2, Short-Term Rentals. And so this effort is being led by actually three departments. One is your city attorney, Mark Saffarano, because it involves tax collection, the finance department, Ken Yiv Sun, who is the finance director, and the community and economic development department is also involved due to the regulatory framework. So first of all, I turn it over to City Attorney Mark Saffarano.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This project has been a long-term project that has involved several stages. The first stage of which was to evaluate what sort of model should the city implement with respect to tax collection? Should the city attempt to collect tax from the platforms, from all of the hosts, or from a combination of both, depending on the business model of the platforms? The evaluation of those alternatives has actually been quite complicated and time-consuming, involving staff, as the city manager said, from both community development and the finance department. And what we have ended up with is, in essence, I would say, a partial hybrid model whereby the city would enter into a voluntary collection agreement with those entities that are willing to provide such agreements, which include Airbnb. And from those entities, the platforms, that are not willing to provide those agreements, to find a way to enforce the provisions of our municipal code that we proposed and the city council adopted a little over a year ago. That was Title III. However, in looking at that, we discovered that some of the hosts indicate, excuse me, some of the platforms have indicated to us that they don't actually collect the tax, that the tax is collected by the host, and therefore we would have to go after all of the individual hosts. That in turn led the city down the path of retaining a consultant, HDL, to evaluate how would they go, collect the tax from all of the, you know, hundreds or if not thousands of hosts in the city. And while the finance department is still evaluating that alternative, in the meantime, we are proceeding forward with a voluntary collection agreement with Airbnb and also corresponding with the other entities indicating to them that under our municipal code, they are actually required to collect the tax. They can't just say, oh, the host is doing it. They have an obligation to collect and remit it. So we're not sure how far that's going to go, but we do know that Airbnb is interested in a voluntary collection agreement. We actually just today exchanged sort of the last draft of that agreement. We may have a couple of changes to it, but we anticipate fairly shortly, perhaps even in the next couple of weeks, that we would come to terms on that. We are still waiting for a preliminary and approximate amount of income or of tax that the city could expect to receive from Airbnb, and we'll, of course, let you know what that is or what the ballpark is, once we receive that information. So with that, I'm going to toss it over to Pamela, who will tell us a little bit about the municipal code, or excuse me, the zoning code, possible amendments that the city council already reviewed previously. There was some question about whether the code should be amended, for example, to relax some of the regulatory restrictions given staffing and resource levels. But I'll let her and the city manager address those topics.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, city council. I'm the mayor. So following up on what Mark is saying, depending on how much you collect from Airbnb and various platforms, staff will come back to city council looking at the existing ordinance that had been adopted last year, 2020, regarding section of the Code 12.270, in particular, the registration implementation program. So knowing that HDL may charge a hefty service charge for this program, and with the lack of staff, staff wants to come back to council asking any direction to possibly amend the existing registration and implementation program, in particular to do with enforcement and also the annual ongoing registration program and how to enforce it. So staff will be coming to council possibly in the spring of 2022, the study session, and then the adoption to follow in maybe possibly quarter two or quarter, I'm sorry, quarter three of 2022.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Wu. And let me step a little bit on the balcony and just say at a high level, what the potential amendments to our regulations are intended to do. what the potential amendments to our regulations are intended to do is to balance the city's regulatory framework with the impact that short-term rentals are having. As we look into implementing this further, what is clear is that the initial revenue estimate that we had is potentially a hundred thousand dollars a year. That, based on our current regulatory framework, we may spend every dollar of that and potentially more on the regulatory framework and enforcement. And so it's important for us to take a holistic look, and it's our understanding that when this process was initially talked about and brought up by the city council, it was looked at a as, at a, as a taxing mechanism for additional revenue. And our current regulatory framework will really cost substantial sums to, to, to put together and maintain on an ongoing basis. And so we really want to balance that with the impact that short-term rentals are having in our community and take another look at that. But as the city attorney said, first and foremost, we're moving forward with a voluntary collection agreement, often called the VCA with Airbnb. With regard to the other platforms, we are, we are not the only city that is encountering challenges with other platforms collecting and remitting the tax. Airbnb is the, I would say, preeminent platform that will implement voluntary collection agreements, and the ability to require other platforms to do that and potentially take action against them for not doing that is something that is impacting the entire state. And you may recall that there was proposed state legislation that was not passed this year that was going to, at the state level, make it mandatory for platforms to collect and remit to cities. And so we are certainly continuing contact with our state legislators, state legislators, and hope that that comes back. But the first, first, first step first is entering into the voluntary collection agreement, and then also implementing a platform where a host that are responsible, whether their, 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 their plat, their platform collects and remits, the host is still responsible for remitting to the city. And so we will be setting up a process where the host can go on to the city's website or go on to our vendor's website and pay their required STR tax. And then thirdly, approaching the city council and really doing that balance test that we talked about between the regulatory and policy framework with regard to STRs because of the implementation cost of that. I want to pause there and take any questions. Okay, not seeing any questions. We will continue forward.
Councilmember Mason has your hand up.
Sorry, I'm not seeing that. Councilwoman Mason.
Just a quick question about that. So when, when, understanding the complexities of this, when, when are we looking at again as a target implementation date?
We, we have a, we have a draft of the voluntary collection agreement with Airbnb, and we are looking to implement that beginning in November or December of 2021. And so we will execute that, that, that VCA with Airbnb and then move forward on phase two and then phase three, phase two being setting up a process for a host that utilizes another platform to rem, to remit to the city, and then taking a holistic look at the regulatory framework and bringing that back to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing any other hands. We will go to initiative nine point three, cannabis regulations, an active project. This is being led by the community and economic development department and the city attorney. And I will turn it over to the city attorney to begin.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So this is an initiative that staff has been working on for the last number of months. And it, it started with the city council direction to review the possibility of having cannabis dispensaries in commercial cannabis establishments in some areas within the city, likely primarily the downtown or transit corridor area. So as that is primarily a land use and zoning issue, we involve community and economic development. They involve a consultant with experience in this. I'll let Pamela talk about that in a moment. But it is important to understand that while this may seem like a simple task, it's actually not that simple. You may know that the California League of Cities, JAL CalCities, recently published a comprehensive guide to cannabis. It's on their website. If anybody wants to look at it, it's, it's over seventy-five pages, and talks about all of the legal, regulatory, finance, compliance, and permitting issues that are endemic to the field. So this is a highly regulated industry. It's highly regulated by the state. It's highly taxed by the state. And we, the city's ordinances need to not only be consistent with those regulations, but there needs to be some policy thought given to where those dispensaries should be located. How many should there be? Should there be, you know, any, any other sort of zoning regulations? So that's the reason why we're working closely with the community economic development and the consultants to come up with that and also determine the appropriate environmental analysis, and then finally determine whether there's any sort of public outreach that is necessary to those locations or to neighbors, neighbors and neighborhoods in those locations where those dispensaries may be located. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pamela.
Thank you, Mark. So as Mark mentioned, we have retained my logistics, who is a planning consultant. We're also working on a number of other city projects. They have expertise area in cannabis regulation. They have prepared ordinances for other jurisdictions in the Bay Area. So as Mark mentioned, we're looking at a possible location, knowing that there are restrictions from federal and state with regard to a cannabis establishment, a retail establishment. And this would, will be an amendment to the local municipal code as well as the zoning ordinance. So staff has been working with the planning consultant, basically laying, laying out the map and figuring out, you know, the establishment has to be a speed away from the school, from the church, from this type of use, and then basically do a reverse engineering to figure out where that could happen. We're hoping, at the same time, once we figured out the framework, to evaluate the environmental analysis that's needed for the zoning code, and we're hoping to counter counsel for a study session to provide a framework of the regulatory guideline in February of 2022. And essentially, we'll ask council, as Mark mentioned, should we limit the number of these establishments? Maybe not. Should we have a concentrated area? And what sort of an environmental clearance should the city take on or pass on to its developer or, or the retail establishment? So those are the questions that we are contemplating. This is moving on a rather fast track. So we're actually having a meeting with consultant tomorrow to kind of talk about the overall timeline. And then once ED has a good framework, we'll be working with City Accounting's office to make sure that the legal ones will come. And once the study session is presented, we'll get direction from the city council and then prepare the necessary code amendment and come back possibly before the end of next year for both the municipal code and also the zoning code amendment.
All right. And just one comment from me. I want to make sure that the council understands that there are two critical components of this initiative that I want to, I want to confirm. The first of which is that in developing cannabis regulations, we are beginning by starting with cannabis dispensaries, which is the feedback and direction we believe we heard from the city council around the creation of this initiative, which is begin with, with something as soon as possible and look toward dispensaries. There were a number of comments from various members of the city council around other cities and the number of dispensaries that they have, and other cities beginning to allow dispensaries. And so we have focused this initiative and the regulations on dispensaries. The second item that through the process that we outlined, I, I just want to elevate, is that we are preparing these regulations to be brought forward to the city council and for the city council to adopt it. You will remember approximately a year ago, when we were talking about placing a cannabis tax on the ballot, we talked about that the city council has an option. The tax has to be approved by voters, and the regulations can be approved by the city council or by voters. We are focusing this project, and we believe, based on council feedback and direction that we want to confirm, to focus on retail and prepare regulations that the city council will enact. And that is the process that we're following. And so unless I hear from the city council tonight that we should adjust that, that, that approach, we'll, we'll continue. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
That is the approach that I understand. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't support changing that. My question has to do with, so when we get to the January, March timeframe, we start to have study sessions. So will those be designed as pub, as public forums to allow, to allow residents to come and give feedback on, on the zoning piece of it? Or is, I'm assuming we'll want to have resident feedback on the, the decisions on where we, where we will allow it?
I, I believe it will be designed as a public meeting, not a public hearing, where inputs from the communities is definitely welcome.
Great.
Yeah, if I may, I'm sorry, City Attorney, Mr. Hamilton, Councilmember Hamilton. The object is to go to the city council for that study session first to receive direction and public comment. And because these are zoning ordinances, they'll go back to the planning commission. So it will be yet another opportunity for commentary at the planning commission. And then finally, those ordinance amendments will come back to the city council for introduction and adoption. And when we do that last stage of it, we'll also bring back any amendments or repeal that we need of the city's current municipal codes, which currently prohibit cannabis dispensaries for both medical and commercial reasons. So just to have a complete package for you.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any additional questions. We will continue with the study session. So the next item in our study session, and we have approximately forty minutes to do that or thirty-seven minutes, is to talk about items that are related to the November twenty twenty-two ballot, both your current initiatives or any proposed new ideas. And there are some that have been mentioned that are on here. So why don't we begin? So the goal of this discussion, and we're going to facilitate it with council, so this is truly the city council having a discussion and providing direction, is to decide what's on our plate, right? What's on staff's plate to analyze and bring back to the city council for possible inclusion in the November twenty-two ballot? Again, you are not making the decision if you say look into X ballot measure or Y tax, that that's going to be on the ballot. You're simply deciding the direction for, for staff to, to do work to bring back to you. The city council's final decision to place items on the November twenty-two ballot, we have planned for that to occur in July of 2022. That month is important because what you'll see on a subsequent calendar is August twelfth is the date that we are required to submit any resolutions to the city, to, to the county for any ballot measures, and that's eighty-eight days away from the election. And so what you say tonight will really set the course for roughly a nine-month process for us to undertake work on ballot initiatives. And know that, that that will likely involve likely voter polling, various study sessions with the city council to review information and make decisions about those specific ballot measures. And again, the goal of, of, of the items we're going to talk about is not to talk about the, the actual merits of the individual items, but really for council to decide, should staff do work on that to potentially bring them back? Many of these items have a lot of questions and, and data that you need to receive to make an informed decision on putting them on the ballot. But we really want to know what's on the plate. And so there are, as, as we said before, three potential ballot items in your existing strategic initiatives. They can be, as we'll talk shortly about, two ballot questions. One, so nine point one is the city charter development and a commercial property transfer tax. There's an example to do that in one integrated measure, where you have the charter and the commercial property transfer tax as one ballot question. And then we talked about stormwater funding. And so now, why don't I pause here and turn it over to the city clerk to talk really briefly about our calendar for ballot questions. And so this is a, a calendar that is essentially set up backing up from the dates that are required, that we have to submit items to the city, to the county. And really, the, the first one is going to be, is, is going to begin with various study sessions that we will have during the months of January to March as we further look into and refine the, the potential ballot questions we're looking at. But the dates that follow are, are dates that we're targeting to hit based on that calendar. So, uh, City Clerk Thurman, would you go through these at, at a high level, the dates?
Yes, so this specific calendar here was created for the possible inclusion of a charter, a city charter ballot on the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two ballot. November eighth, two thousand twenty-two is the election date for next, next year. The numbers you see underneath the dates on the left, E dash one six nine, E dash one four eight. What that means is those are, let's say, May third, two thousand twenty-two. That is one hundred and sixty-nine days before that November eighth election date. So it's basically counting away from that election date. And so we have it marked because that's how it's marked in the elections code. So for the first part of the city charter, the city would recommend holding three study sessions, I'm sorry, holding study sessions in the beginning part of two thousand twenty-two between the time of January to, in March, just so that we can start the preliminary discussion around potentially putting a charter on the ballot. And then we cannot, we would have to publish a first public hearing notice no later than May third, two thousand twenty-two. We can't publish it any further than one hundred and sixty-nine days before the election. So we can't go one hundred and seventy days, one hundred and seventy-one. It has to be by one sixty-nine. So for that, we would recommend having our first publication date is May third, two thousand twenty-two. And then we have to have twenty-one days of that notice to be put out before we can hold our first public hearing. That's why you'll see the next column, public hearing number one. That recommended meeting date is May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and that is a regular city council date. The next publication, we do need to have a second public hearing. That publication also requires twenty-one days' notice. And we do recommend that publication date is June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and it can be no later than one hundred and thirty-nine days before the election. And then the public hearing date for that second public hearing we are recommending is June twenty-eighth, which meets the twenty-one day notice requirement, but then an added requirement that it be held at least thirty days after that first public hearing was held on May twenty-fourth. So May twenty-fourth to June twenty-eighth, we are covered in that thirty-day timeline, while also being covered in the twenty-one day noticing timeline. And then, of course, we do have the adoption of the resolution, as Jovan mentioned. The San Mateo County elections and the state does require that this is the date, eighty-eight days before the election, that all ballot measures have an adoption calling for the election, and to place them on the November eighth ballot. So whatever ballots we are placing on the November ballot, we have to have a resolution adopted and sent to the county no later than August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. So that's very important because I wouldn't recommend we hold a meeting on August twelfth to discuss putting something on the ballot. Because then that means that we've already passed the five P M deadline to get that item to the county on time. So we, we always recommend to have some wiggle room there so that we can get So we always recommend to have some wiggle room there so that we can get resolutions signed, everything, we need all of our paper and our ducks in a row to get to the county. So that is why we are recommending a regular city council meeting date of July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, to have those resolutions be heard and adopted. That's not uncommon. We typically in San Bruno do have the second meeting in July on the even years, the date of when we bring items to, calling the election for the county. So that's very typical. And then, of course, the election date will be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and any ballots that we have adopted per resolution will be placed on those ballots for San Bruno votes.
Okay, moving on to the next slide, I will turn that over to the city attorney. And this is with regard to the city charter and commercial real property transfer tax ballot options. And so there are two options for the city council.
Yes, thank you, Jovan. So just very briefly, there are two options, you see them on the screen. So you can have, you can place a measure on for the city charter and a measure on for the commercial transfer, a commercial property transfer tax. I want to pause for just a moment to indicate, just to make sure it's clear, that when the voters vote on a charter, the charter has to be before the voters. In other words, the charter is not effective unless the voters vote on the actual document that is presented to them. So that document has to be completed, it has to be finalized, it will be finalized if the city council elects to do so by the time the resolution is adopted. So you're asking the voters, do you want to adopt this charter as it is currently constituted? Separately, you can certainly place a tax on the ballot, you can place a variety of taxes on. The point of the charter, or if the point of the charter is to allow the implementation of a real property transfer tax, you could do it two ways, and those are the two options. Either have it done as two ballot measures or have it done in an integrated way. And we can talk a little bit about what the pros and cons of that are, but very briefly, if you have two ballot measures, then you risk the problem of one of the things being adopted and not the other being adopted. Obviously, you can't, the tax cannot be adopted unless the charter is adopted, but conversely, voters could adopt the charter and not the tax. So in order to mitigate that problem, the city of El Cerrito determined that it would be best to have those two measures be integrated. In other words, you're adopting the charter, which includes the commercial real property transfer tax, the charter includes all of the details of what that tax is going to encompass, who's going to be taxed at one rate. So you're doing it all at once, it either, either all passes or it all fails and you may have to come back and try again. So in El Cerrito, that was really the primary purpose, I would say virtually the only purpose of that charter was to adopt and collect that tax. So we also do know from looking at the materials in El Cerrito, and you're welcome to review them, they're all online as well, they did perform polling around the city charter. In El Cerrito, the city council did appoint a charter commission, that is one of the several alternatives that the city council could do. You in San Bruno, the city council, may decide that you want to propose the charter, but in El Cerrito, there were various reasons, policy reasons and otherwise, why the city council thought it best to have an independent charter commission to work on that charter. However, that process takes much longer and is much more complicated. There's, there's a lot of meetings, there were sort of dozens of additional things that needed to be done. So would certainly be my professional recommendation that if you do want to put this on the ballot in November, do so quickly and do so simply that the way to go would be to emulate pretty much what El Cerrito did, but to have the city council draft the charter, place it on the ballot and do so with an integrated tax question.
Yeah. In addition, if anyone looks up the El Cerrito process, their transfer tax was both for residential and commercial. Ours, based on the city council's prior express intent, would only be for commercial. I just want to make that clear. And so we'll come back to this, and I'm going to get through the last couple of slides in this presentation. So the other question is, should there be a stormwater funding ballot question on the November twenty twenty-two ballot? And as we all know, flooding can happen anywhere in our city. And we talked before about a potential stormwater ballot question, and the city council committed to return to that question in October, which it is. And so the question is, should we look into a capital infrastructure bond? Should we look into a parcel tax or some other structure to provide funding for our stormwater system? I know the city council knows all of this, and so we won't go into it in detail, but we all know that much of San Bruno's stormwater system dates back to the nineteen hundreds. We skipped ahead. Dates back to the nineteen hundreds, the fee has not changed for twenty-seven years and was last updated in nineteen ninety-four. We performed a study, a master plan in two thousand and fourteen, and we knew at that point that there were capacity improvements of thirty million dollars. And we're also estimating stormwater condition improvements of another twenty-two point nine million. And there are new regional permit requirements that will require additional funds to be expended, but none of these costs we have the ability to fund. We had a million-dollar shortfall in our stormwater system when we began adopting our budget for this year after our prior measure failed. And so city council knows that we undertook a Prop two eighteen property owner election in two thousand twenty-one. That ballot measure received a sixty-four percent disapproval. It sought, it sought to increase the median fee on a single-family home by nine dollars a month in order to recover enough funds to cover both maintenance and capital, maintenance and operations, as well as capital expenditures, which the system currently does not have the funds to do. And so we know that even though residents voted not in favor of that prior measure for whatever reason, right? There was the COVID nineteen recession, we are, were in drought and various other issues, but we know our residents want their public infrastructure maintained. As a city, we committed to identifying a solution. And earlier this year, the city council committed to revisit this question. And we all know that continuing the status quo means that San Bruno's stormwater system will continue to experience flooding during heavy rain events, and we need no example other than this past Sunday. And all these pictures here were taken from this past Sunday, where we had flooding in various parts of San Bruno. A lot of these are near Seventh Avenue and on San Bruno Avenue, but there were, there was flooding throughout the city at significant impacts. And in this one storm, which was, as we all know, the wettest storm on record in October, our stormwater system here in San Bruno was, was once again reached its limits. So we had very real and significant impacts due to capacity age, title issues, but various stormwater challenges that we all know are sort of ever-present in San Bruno. And so there are potential ballot, and there are potential other things that have been mentioned by the city council, there may be more, but we wanted to put up a few others just because, wanted to make an important note that members of the city council have talked about elected official term limits, alternative voting methods, and potentially a rotational mayor. Just wanted to point out that all of those are factors of a city charter. And so while they could be on a ballot separate potentially, they would all go into a city charter. They don't have to go into the city charter, they could be separate ballot questions, but it's important to note that any changes, any, either of those three would go into the city charter. There's also been conversations with regard, with regard to an increase in the gambling club table tax. I have been asked that question by several council members to look into the amount of revenue that the city of San Bruno receives compared to other cities. That work has not been done. It is something that irrespective of questions from council members, it is something that I have asked staff to look into as a comparison. We know this year, just that on, on a, on an overall note, our structure is based on a table tax, not on a revenue. And so we know that our revenue did not decline for our gambling clubs, that we receive from our gambling clubs, or some of our neighbors that have clubs, their revenue, their, their tax is based on a gross revenue model, and so they did see a decrease. So there's both questions of the structure as well as the amount. And again, should the city council want staff to look into it? We will do that, and any decisions will be made later. And the question is other, are there others that the city council would like to discuss? And so really, that's where we end tonight with this question, which is, what are those potential items that the city council would like staff to work on and bring back to you for further consideration? We know that there are three that are in your current strategic initiatives, and then there's the potential increase in the gambling club table tax, rotational mayor, elected official term limits, alternative voting methods, which the city council directed staff to schedule a presentation for or other. The blue right now is on our work plan, and we are certainly working on, and will certainly prepare the information in a timely fashion so you can make the decision to put it on the November ballot. But should there be direction to put any of the ones in green or others on? We really need that direction so that we can appropriately adjust staff time and our internal work effort so we can align to the required election schedule. With that, the last slide is on questions, but again, the final decision on putting anything on the ballot will not occur until July twenty twenty-two. The last slide is questions, but I'll leave it here and take questions from the city council.
City manager was facilitating, but please, Councilmember Hamilton, thank you.
Sure. So I'll hold my, I have some thoughts, but we're asking specifically for questions. The one question that I have would be potentially if we were going to go to the ballot for stormwater, whether, you know, whether that be a bond or whatever. I would assume, as with any, with any potential ballot measure of that type, that we would do polling beforehand before making the decision? Is that, would that be part of the plan?
Absolutely. I should have said that, repeated that we would absolutely advise on polling for any ballot measures the city council would want to consider. And so we would put together a, similar to how we've done in prior years, put together a polling firm and undertake polling on various sort of, not only the question, but various components of the item.
Got it. All right. Thank you. I'll hold my comment, my comments and on direction until after everyone's got questions. Thank you.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Medina?
You're on mute, Marty.
One more button to push, I apologize. You're right. Thank you, city manager, Grogan, staff. Our city continues to have a lot of needs and, 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 and those revenues that we need to increase in order to pay for them. Let's make sure I clarify, I really don't have a question, I, I'm just ready to, to add what I'm willing to go forward with this slide here. So I just wanted to make sure if anybody had any other questions, they can go ahead and go, but I'm, I'm ready to start. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I had one question. One is on the increased table tax. So currently, there's already, in municipal code, it states the range based on the number of tables, and there's an annual increase that occurs every year. So how does that play into it since there is already a set methodology as well as an annual increase? And as it was alluded to by the city manager, during the COVID and the shutdown, we received every, everything that the city billed, even when they were closed, for forty percent of the year. So not sure if that would, you know, you know, what say do they have? Because I would say, well, hold on now. So anyway, just verify that I'm correct in my statements, and I'm trying to figure out how all that would be equate.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor Medina, in your statement. There's currently a gambling club table tax in the city's municipal code. There is a rate per table, and it does increase annually by an inflationary factor. And because it is a table tax and our local gambling club did not change their number of tables during COVID nineteen, we received the entire amount of tables that they are authorized for, whether the club was open or closed. With regard to any changes to that, the city council does have the option to put a measure on the ballot to adjust the amount of that tax or make any changes to the structure of that tax. And so it's my understanding that the question around potentially increasing it has to do with adjusting the rate.
Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. So my question is, are, well, are we going to go around so that every council member has an opportunity to just go down the list? Or how exactly would you like this, so that every council member is heard on the issues?
Well, as the vice mayor said, he was looking for any other questions, and I had a question, so I went ahead and I was seeing no other hands for that. So unless you, there's a question.
Yeah, so my question is, do you need a consensus of three, or can we go around so that everybody speaks on all of the issues?
Yeah. I think everybody should have a turn to say what, to speak to what they wish. I do want to let us know that it's coming on six fifty, so our time is somewhat limited. And city manager is a backup, what happens if we find ourselves up against the clock?
We can return to this at a later date. Should we not receive any direction, staff will continue with the items in blue that are shown here, which are a part of your existing initiatives?
Okay, so we'll start and we'll do as best we can. I do want to give us a couple of minutes to switch over if possible, right? Just to make sure we're all set up and ready to go. And Councilmember Hamilton, thank you.
Okay, so I, starting with the conversation with the city charter, I think it makes, I think it does make sense to go with a single ballot measure with one, with one, you know, charter amendment on it, which would be the commercial transfer tax. So that, so for that reason, I would want to put off the alternate voting methods, term limits, and rotational mayor, because those would, those would, if those were on the ballot, then that, those would be competing questions with the, with the charter itself. And I think that those are things that we can, that we can revisit at the next election. And regarding the, regarding the table tax, I'm really of two minds of it, and I would, I'm going to wait to see, hear what other people have to say about that, I want to be completely honest. So those are my comments.
Thank you for keeping them concise. Appreciate it. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I'm going to start by saying that I think if we are looking at a successful stormwater funding measure, taxpayers, including myself, are going to want to know that we've gone everywhere we can before we come to my particular pocket. And so I do think it's really important that we look at these, all the initiatives on here. So I'll just go down the list. I think the city charter with a commercial tax, I agree with Councilmember Hamilton. And, okay, go and ask that, okay? Okay, sorry about that. So the city charter with a commercial tax will be a yes for me, the stormwater funding measure, yes for me, the increased gambling club table tax, yes, comparing measure, yes for me, the increased gambling club table tax, yes, comparing to other gambling or cardhouses within the area, our numbers are very different. So while this may have been a good year for us because of the way that the tax is set up, it doesn't appear to be that way on a year-to-year basis when I compare to other cardhouses. So we're not, we're not approving this to be on the ballot right now, we're only saying go and get some more information and bring it back to us. And I do think it's worth staff's time to determine whether this is a viable measure, given that we're going to be asking potentially taxpayers to go into their pockets and potentially pay for some stormwater. So yes, on the increased table tax. Alternative voting method, I'm not ready, I did initiate the conversation at the last meeting, but as I said before, I think we need more information on it before looking to move further. So no need to work on that until we have a presentation, so it'll likely have to wait another year. Term limits, if they can be separate on the ballot from the charter, I do think it's worth just exploring, I don't imagine it would take a lot of staff time for that one, rotational mayor, again, as separate ballot measures, but not part of the city charter with the commercial tax. Same with the rotating mayor. And then I just, just do want to mention, as we go down with the other items and with the other council members, there was a request also for campaign contribution limits, and that wasn't brought up as part of this conversation, I apologize for bringing it up earlier. But I would also support any research to be done on campaign contribution limits. And, you know, hopefully the other council members do support the city charter with commercial tax, because as we keep selling these buildings, we're looking at almost $1 million of revenue already lost to the city. So for anybody watching in the public, just know this is not a residential tax, this is a commercial tax, and the city is losing substantial amounts of money. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason, just because I was taking notes, yes on the gaming to look into, no at the alternative voting, yes on the elected official, uh, term limits, sorry, and rotational mayor, yes, but not part of the charter, but also you want the single charter. Did I grab that right?
No, so the charter, the city charter with the commercial tax, yes, the stormwater, yes, the increased gambling club tax, yes, and elected official term limits, yes, rotational mayor, yes. Also request looking into the campaign contributions. I know it's a lot, but again, we're asking staff to look into something and bring it back, and then make a determination.
Just wanted to clarify. Vice Mayor Medina?
Through the mayor really fast, I didn't mention one way or the other on stormwater, and so I was, I was yes for stormwater.
Thank you very much for clarifying. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try to be brief here, keeping the city charter with the commercial property tax, noting that JCPenney's was sold to a developer for 105 million. 1% of that would have been $1 million that the city had lost on one sale. So I'm in favor of a city charter combined with the property tax, for commercial only. Knowing that our stormwater lost with big numbers, I'm in favor of staff proceeding with some type of response, until knowing what that response is. I can't say whether I'm going to be in favor of putting on the ballot, but by all means, continue looking at methods. As for looking at investigating gambling club table tax, it's always okay to do research on what other cities are doing and how to add revenues to our city. Alternative voting methods, no for the time being, we're waiting for a presentation from them anyhow. I'm in favor of term limits, I'm in favor of a rotational mayor, I'm in favor of campaign limit contributions, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar?
I would say stormwater funding is absolutely my priority, but, you know, we do have some data from the previous attempt at getting this funded, and I don't recall that we ever got the analysis that we requested in terms of why the vote failed, or any kind of speculation on what we could do differently, if, you know, if there would be more support if we excluded commercial property owners. And, and so I would definitely want to see that before we go too far down the road of trying to put it back on the ballot and going that route. Rather indifferent to the city charter, but being that the commercial property tax is only possible if that goes through, I am in favor of looking into that as well. And everything else, I would say, is not compelling at this time.
Okay, thank you. And for me, I'm going to go kind of what Mr. Salazar, Mr. Hamilton said. I think we've all concurred that commercial tax for charter is a go, I've heard that from everyone. I've heard that stormwater is a go. I did hear there was some data and information, of course, nothing's defined. Let's see, on the, oh, there was another, campaign finance reform, so I'm sorry, I don't want to forget that, there were two that I heard did say that. I am not at this time, rotational mayor, elected, alternative voting, or the gambling tax, I'm not. I know we have items that I think are going to be very important to get on and focus, and not confused. On the gaming tax, too, if you want to look at countywide, unless you're looking statewide, there's very little to look to, and we know how their methodology works. But anyway, I wanted to make it brief. Mr. Hamilton, I did want to circle back to you, because you were on the gambling club tax.
Yeah, so I am in favor of looking into it, and just, and getting a, getting a report on there so we can make a decision there. I just want to clarify through the city manager, for, you know, the alternative voting methods, it's still a no for that one, but for the term limits and the rotational mayor, those would have to be part of a charter, or not, or would they not? Can they, can they be done separately while we still have a charter on the, while having a charter on the ballot?
So we need to look into that, I think there are a few questions in Ben and your question. One is, in, on one ballot, can we have a city charter and have a separate ballot question that would amend that charter if adopted? We need to answer that question. With regard to, can a rotational mayor be done with, by, with the city charter by itself? That's a complicated question, but the answer is yes and no. If we're doing a charter, how you elect your mayor needs to be in the charter. And then if we're not, then we can change measure F, and so a number of these have interplayed. But we can research all of those. What we're really looking for direction from council is sort of what's on the plate for us to look into, and we can do a quick recap.
Please.
On through all council members, just to make sure that we're leaving here with a clear understanding. I think it's a resounding yes to, for staff to proceed with analysis on a city charter in one integrated measure with a commercial property transfer tax. It's a resounding yes to look into potential stormwater funding measures, but bring back additional information about that, as well as the demographic information of the prior vote. With regard to alternative voting, I thought I heard a resounding no to that. With regard to looking into data on our gambling club revenue compared to other cities, I thought I heard three yeses on that, but I want to confirm. So Tom is shaking his head, I heard a yes from Tom, a yes from Linda, a yes from Marty. With regards to elected official term limits, I believe I heard three yeses on that. Councilmember Hamilton, councilwoman Mason, Vice Mayor Medina. Is that to look into the potentiality of doing that on November 22?
Yes, I want to be clear, though, that if, if it's, if it affects the charter, then a no.
Okay.
So, but, so that question is still open, so I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, so look into it, but understanding that if it has to be combined on the same ballot question with the charter, councilmember Hamilton is likely a no. And looking into rotational mayor, I think that there were three affirmatives, Hamilton, Mason, and Vice Mayor Medina.
I was the same answer for, same answer for me on.
Same answer for that, okay. So I think we have clear direction on these, but I, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
What I want, thank you, city manager, I'm going to, I'm sorry to cut it short, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, because we have to be off this meeting for others to get in, and.
One last thing, I'll be very fast.
There's some emails being asked if the meeting's been canceled at 7:00. Please, councilmember.
Campaign finance, we didn't, we didn't talk about that one, and that wasn't, that wasn't an option when I voted my, I'm a yes for that one, that makes three, thank you.
Thank you for clarity.
That's three yeses for campaign finance, Hamilton, Mason, Vice Mayor Medina.
Okay.
Again, all of these are staff looking into, not making a decision whether it's on the ballot. Thank you.
Fair statement, we're going to adjourn, we'll see you in just a second.